Good evening, everyone. I hope everybody's been staying safe. I'm going to call the meeting to order of the Board of Commissioners of the Reading Municipal Light Department. This meeting of the Reading Municipal Light Department Board of Commissioners is being recorded via Zoom for distribution to the community television stations in Reading, North Reading, Wilmington and Linfield. The RMLD Board of Commissioners recognizes the importance of hearing public comment at the discretion of the Chair on items on the official agenda as well as on items not on the official agenda. We ask that all questions or comments from the public be directed to the Chair and that all parties, including members of the RMLD Board, act in a professional and courteous manner when addressing the Board or responding to comments. Once recognized by the Chair, all persons addressing the Board shall state their name and address prior to speaking. It is the role of the Chair to maintain order in all public comment or ensuing discussion. I'd like to, where's Phil? Phil, are you there?
I'm here.
Oh, good. There you are, Phil.
Here I am.
Phil, welcome, Mr. Two Eyes. Phil is back with brand new vision.
Better than I have in years. But I do want to let you warn you that at one point you just may see me drop off a camera because I gotta go take some more eye drops.
Sure. I think that's fantastic. You've got your eyes back. That's just awesome. What I'd like to do is just in terms of opening remarks, we have a pretty full agenda tonight. We'll try to get through reasonably quickly. We've got two major subjects. One is our budget, obviously, which we're going to deal with first, and then we're going to deal with changes to the energy policy, which has been circulated and I think everyone has had a chance peruse and will make a number of changes, I'm sure, tonight. In terms of public comment, I'd like, if anyone would like to speak, I'd like to limit things to no more than two minutes if that's possible. So do we have anyone who'd like to make a comment tonight? Go ahead, Gail. You're on mute, though, Gail.
Thank you. My name is Gail Page and I am the Coordinator of the Greater Reading Alliance for Clean Energy and also the Chair of the Unitarian Universalist Church of Reading's Green Sanctuary. Mr. Chairman, thank you for this opportunity to speak and thank you and all the other Commissioners and for your volunteer service to RMLD. We really appreciate that and know it's kind of a labor of love. And we're here as a labor of love also on behalf of the health of our planet and the people on our planet. We are very grateful for all the work you do on energy efficiency and electrification. At the last meeting, we were really, really so happy because after receiving some information from the Greater Reading Alliance for Clean Energy and some other groups about biomass, which we're concerned about is not a clean or really renewable fuel. And after hearing from members, attending members, about their concerns about biomass and particularly about the Palmer biomass plant in Springfield, you were very open to this information and indicated that we would have a discussion about it tonight. So we're really glad about that. And as a matter of fact, we even wrote a letter to the editor of local papers. It was published in the Chronicle this week and in the Reading Post a prior week, thanking you for your openness about this and your willingness to consider a change in policy around biomass and also about the Palmer contract. So when I looked at the agenda for this meeting, I didn't see any agenda item about a biomass discussion. And actually, the clean energy policy, it was indicated that it was, you had recommended that it be passed and the clean energy policy had biomass in it. And we were just confused about that. So those are questions. Will there be a discussion tonight about biomass?
Yeah, let me answer that. And a couple of comments. One, we certainly appreciate your letters to the editor and your comments to us. We really do because we are all volunteers, but we have to go through the process and open meeting laws and other things like that. And so we are going to have that discussion tonight. We've been meaning to have it actually for a long time. I'm talking long time in terms of probably, you know, a year or two. We've had so many other things that have sort of gotten in the way of that, including payment to the town of Reading, which is a huge, major issue that we struggled with for probably over a year, as many of the Board of Commissioners know, as well as many other issues that you don't know about. So we are going to discuss it tonight and I think it'll be, everyone will leave with a good sense about where we are. I do wish that you had been here, let's say, a year ago because it would have been really helpful to have you a year ago instead of after we have signed a contract. And I do caution you to be careful in terms of innuendo in any of your public statements because now we are, we can't, you know, discuss signed contracts in our discussion here because, you know, there are obvious liability concerns and I want you to be very aware of that. So while we appreciate, you know, your comments and everything, please bear that in mind. It's very important to us. It's very important to all four of our towns from an economic perspective. So that's why we cannot just go ahead and just make comments and promises without, you know, backing them up with facts and then making changes. We will make some changes tonight, I'm sure.
Thank you.
Anyone else care to comment?
Karen would like to.
I'm sorry?
Karen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Stacy. Tracy, sorry. So I wanted to take a moment tonight. The Reading Select Board has been talking a lot about what we need to do to bring Reading forward in terms of clean energy. And if that means electrification is going to provide us the best way to get that clean energy, then that's one of the things that we want to consider strongly, as well as other initiatives like your community solar and as you know, we had, a town meeting had agreed to look into joining green communities. And I wanted to thank Colleen and the support of the Commissioners and the staff that's been involved for helping us go through that and understand what's required in that. That was an effort this year. And I also wanted to say that I'm excited that Town Meeting this year just approved Reading joining or adopting the Energy Stretch Code as our building code. And I especially wanted to thank, I think we have three Commissioners that were here tonight that are also Town Meeting members, Mr. Coulter, Mr. Talbot and Mr. Pacino. I very much appreciate your support. And Colleen, I know you joined in and Chuck and Elad may also have been joined into the information session. So we think that is a big step forward for Reading, both for trying to do things in a more climate-friendly way. And so we appreciate your support and we're going to continue to push along that path. Thank you.
And Karen, if you had also mentioned that you're potentially looking for an additional charging station?
Oh, yes. Thank you. So one of the things that the Select Board did ask the manager to put as a goal is to get the first public electric vehicle charger in Reading. And I definitely wanted to ask if we could get some support, both financial and technical and planning support from RMLD and work with you as a partner on this to figure out the best way to do this.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Colleen, please.
Karen, thank you. Yes, we will definitely help to locate a charger. We're looking forward to that. It sounds very simple. It's going to have some questions that we'll need to have answered about parking and things like that. But if you want to name a person or somebody from the town who you want us to work with, we'd be glad to reach out and start that right away.
Wonderful. I appreciate that. Vanessa, my colleague Vanessa Alvarado is also on the call. So I think what we should do then is take it back to the Reading Select Board and get their full support and then we'll be able to move that forward. So thank you. I appreciate that. I'm very excited.
Excellent. If we could move on, if there is, did anyone else care to make a comment? Oh, yes. Andy? You're on mute there, Andy.
Got it. Thanks. Andy Friedman, 27 Hillcrest Road. To echo what Gail said, thank you all for your service. I understand the drain of public service and I appreciate that you're all working hard for Reading and the other communities that you serve. I would like to request, and I understand, Mr. Chair, that you have restrictions on discussing the contract for the biomass plant. Discussing that in the open, I get that. But I would urge you all to please reconsider your involvement in that plant. It's really, it's going backwards towards dependence on carbon-based fuels. And that is the opposite direction, I think, that we want to be going in Reading and the surrounding communities. Most people in the United States are very supportive of taking climate change initiative seriously. And I think this would bind into this plant would simply add to the existing, exacerbate the existing problem of climate change by adding more CO2 into the atmosphere. So I respectfully request that you give that another look and if possible, remove that from your consideration. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Andy. Anyone else care to make a comment? If not, I'd like to move forward. The Citizens Advisory Board, Jason, do you have any comments?
No, not at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. And let's see, we heard from the Liaisons to the Board and Vanessa, hello. I didn't see your face there, Vanessa, but hello. The There we go, a voice. And in terms of the item number five, report on this CAB meeting, Vice Chair Hennessy, please.
Well, I think we're going to hear all of the nation that the CAB had today, John, so I don't think I'll repeat it because I think we're going to hear it later.
Okay, great. Thank you. Item number six, approval of the board minutes. If I could have a motion, please. Phil?
No, we're gonna have to wait on those.
Oh, I thought I had seen March 19th.
Yeah, no, I'm sorry. I thought I put a little sad face next to it and said no, but that's gonna have to wait.
Oh, no. Oh, that, okay.
Sorry, that's my fault.
Okay, if we can modify that then so we don't have any minutes to approve.
Next meeting.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, just a quick question.
Yes?
I may. You are planning later on to address the biomass topic, as I understand it, correct? Like before Policy 30, you were planning to kind of give an update on this situation?
Yes, in as much detail as I can. Yes.
Okay.
So our general manager will also be making comments on it and to the extent that we can. Again, I caution everyone, you know, and signed contracts are not a trivial matter. So we need to be just careful and we're trying to follow the letter of what we can do. So I appreciate that from everyone.
Thanks. I was just trying to clarify whether this was still going to come up later, but like
Oh, it's gonna come up.
But in this meeting, so
Time in the budget.
People are interested, it's going to come up later after the budget hearing.
Oh, yeah. No, it is. But I wanted to get through the budget first.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Sure. So if we could move on to item number seven, in terms of the action item, Hameen? Well, I guess we need the motion first and then walk through a second and then walk through the discussion on the budget, or we could do it this way as well. Hameen, if you'd like to go through the budget.
Yes, by all means. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Budget, I'm sorry.
I'll be going over the capital authorization projects and I seek the Board's approval for spending in CY 21 plan estimated. So we all have that large sheet, right? The spreadsheet that, you know, has the listing of the projects. I trust that, you know, you've gone through those and you've gone over them. So on the spreadsheet, if you look at it, Tracy, can you bring this spreadsheet? Or so that, yeah, that would be helpful. Yeah, this is spreadsheet I'm talking about. So I'm not going to go line by line. I'm just going to go over the projects that, you know, they're significant and also you see some changes. On the left, you see the line number. In the next column is a page number and the town. And also you see the project name as well as the CY 20 budget, CY 20 estimate and CY 20 plan estimate. And it goes, some projects that they go all the way to CY 26. So the first item that I'm going to be discussing and I'm going to explain the situation, it's line item number three. That's for the building upgrades. You see that, you know, CY 20, we budgeted $215,000 and we spent $493,000 and we are seeking to spend, the Board of Authorization, to spend $270,000 for CY 21. Now, why did we spend more than what we budgeted? The main reason for that was basically because of the generator.
Is it possible we could actually enlarge this screen, if you would, please? Can we enlarge the screen? Thank you.
Okay. So the reason is because we had the generator failure at Ash Street, which cost us $241,534. It was unexpected. And also, we spent, what the other spendings were, we had the deck project for $171,000. That was the OSHA item, one of the items that was flagged for, per OSHA, for remediation. The Station 4 AC design, the engineering portion of that, for $20,000. And the Station 3 generator that is old and we need to upgrade it in CY 21. And the generator design is completed and we spent $20,000 for engineering design. So that all comes up to $493,000. Now, the Station 3 generator and the cooling, the Station 4 AC, the AC, the actual construction is going to happen in CY 21. And the total number that we are asking for approval is $270,000. The next item is line item number six. You see that the rolling stock replacement. And that is for the CY 19, we had a carryover from every year because of these vehicles that the delivery is not usually in the same year that we're going out to bid. So there's always a carryover from previous year. So we have the underground truck that was delivered. It was actually a carryover from CY 19. It was delivered in CY 20, $468,225. We purchased four SUVs, hybrid SUVs, $451,997. And we picked up, we actually got a pickup truck for $32,536. That's the EcoBoost truck and the pole trailer for $9,151. I just want to stress the importance, the fact that our vehicle replacement program is following the Fuel Efficiency Operational Procedure, RMLD's 19-07, for facilities maintenance. And basically, it is based on the electrification program, which every eight to 10 years, cyclic program, we do in order to reduce the maintenance costs, we are upgrading those or trading those for newer, whatever the technology is available. As the technology is migrating from EcoBoost to electric trucks for light duty and heavy duty trucks. So we are following that trend as well. So in CY 21, we're going to have a carryover of $285,000 for the Digger Derrick that was actually, it was, we went out to bid this year and it's going to be delivered in 2021. So that basically is summing up to the $620,000 that, you know, we are asking for CY 21. So part of that is carryover from CY 20. The next line item is line item number seven. This is electric vehicle supply equipment. And this one is interesting. And CY 20, we paid for the engineering design $14,000. We installed seven charging units at Analog for $69,000. And also the contractor, we paid $15,000 for the installation of those. The cable that we installed, $42,000 plus the labor. And for at 230 Ash Street parking lot, we installed another unit for $7,000. So that adds up to $147,000. So for CY 21, we are asking $100,000 for four units that, you know, we are targeting to install one in each town. And the overall material and the labor for each is going to cost approximately $25,000. So four units is going to sum up to $100,000. The next project that you see is the line item number nine, the software and licensing. This is pretty much normal. Every year, we pay maintenance for a maintenance fee for the maintenance of the softwares, different softwares that, you know, RMLD is using. And that number is pretty much staying steady. So every year, almost $100,000 we spend. Line item number nine, it's licensing also, the licensing of those softwares that we are using. They're also, you know, coming up to, we're asking for $438,000 CY 21. And then we're going to go CY 22 to CY 26 to $239,000. Some of the software that we've been installing and we've been adding this year costing us more money. That's the reason for that. Then line item number 12, we have pad mount switchgear upgrades at industrial parks. These are the switch gears that, you know, the pad mount, the big boxes, the on the roadside that you see obviously off the roadside, but in the private properties that basically they handle the entire load of the parks. We have total of 29 units system-wide and 10 has been replaced, 10 have been replaced to date. We've got three units that they carry over from, it's going to have carryover from CY 20 to CY 21. And we're purchasing five new units in CY 21. And that is summing up to $799,000 that you see on CY 21 budget request. Each unit approximately, it's going to cost, you know, we got the delayed dates. I mean, this is the seven-year program. So once we are done with these switches, so we don't have to worry about them at least for another 15, 10 to 15 years, depending on the weather conditions and how it plays out. So it's a good program. It's very, it's very important to the reliability of the system, especially for the industrial and commercial loads throughout the system. In CY 23, 24, you see that, you know, there are two units in each year. And these are the ones that are more kind of odd configurations, not the normal standard switches that we use. So each is going to cost about $100,000. The rest of the switches, approximately anywhere between 60 to 70, depending on the, you know, the factory backlog. And, you know, that's how much it's going to cost. The next line item is line item number 17, that's AMI mesh network expansion and meter replacement. As you know, we got two systems, right? On meter reading system, one is AMI/AMR and that's Itron. And the other system is Eaton. We've got 29,800 something meters, which 1,200 meters are on the newer system, Eaton system, and the rest are on the Itron system, which Itron system is antiquated and is in need of replacement. So we are doing a study right now. The consultant is doing a study to pick the best options. And I got to caution you that the technology is in transition within next two years in this area. So we are going to purchase MDM as well as the new AMI to replace all the meters because the Itron meters are antiquated. We've got about 3,600 meters that they're not communicating with the outage management system that we recently installed. And therefore, we need to upgrade them so they can communicate with the SCADA and outage management so they can work with OMS and IVR for notification to the customers. The next line item is line item number 30. And that is the transformer and capacitor purchases that every year for the older reliability projects and every project in the system, you know, this is the bucket, the transformer is being drawn out of this bucket. So in CY 20, we spent, we are estimating to spend $698,000, a little bit more than, you know, what we budgeted for. And CY 20, we're going to go back to $418,000 and every year after that, approximately $430,000, $450,000 for that. The line item number 31, it's secondary main and services. This line item, actually, the next two items, I'm going to explain why we went a little bit over the budget this year, line item number 31 and 32. Due to the COVID-19, you know, we, some of the projects that we planned to do, they took more time, obviously, because than we expected. So it was labor-intensive. So the labor costs went up because, you know, we tried to work with the customers, you know, the people are working from home. The kids are on the internet and schooling. So if they couldn't take the outage for replacing their transformers on upgrading their wires, the primaries and secondaries in their areas, so we tried to do them on the weekends. So when, you know, less disturbance to the customers. So as a result, they went up a little bit on the labor end. And the CY 21 on categories for the secondary main and replacement and 138 KV step-down upgrades, we're asking $257,506,000 respectfully. And these are the 138 KV upgrades, the step downs. These are old areas that mostly they're in Linfield and there are some in Reading and North Reading and Wilmington. But mostly located in Linfield area that we, if we upgrade those, the reliability would be much better as well as, you know, the losses, the system losses, they're going to go down, which is saving for the ratepayers and all the customers throughout the system. The next item, I believe, is talked about, okay, substation equipment. Item 36, the substation equipment, we, you know, we, as you know, Station 5, Substation Number 5 in Woodwell area in Wilmington is antiquated and we are searching for a land so we can, you know, build a new substation. So we've been spending some money for the, for the investigation of the few lands that, you know, we had obviously targeted in order to do the study to see whether they are feasible to build the substation, those are not. So that, then also the legal fees involved in order to get into contract with them. So we spent $73,000 and then we're expecting to, for the upgrades, to spend in CY 21, another $10,000 for the, I'm sorry, I gave you the substation equipment upgrade. I apologize. This one is not for Wilmington substation. This is for the, some of the CCVTs, the CTs and PTs that, you know, failed at Station Number 4, unexpected failure that was costing us $73,000. And we're expecting to spend another $10,000 for the upgrades at Station 4 for the rest of the CCVTs in that substation. So the next line item for the budget is the routine construction, which is line item number 40. And that is that, you know, we spent almost $2,320,000 in CY 20 and we're requesting the approval to spend $1,400,000. And we're requesting the approval to spend uh one million four hundred eighty eight. And these categories, these are the sort of pole hits as well as the some of the upgrades into the system uh and the routine construction. Uh so in C Y twenty for pole settings, overhead, underground, primary upgrades. Uh what we spent uh two hundred fifty two thousand, seven hundred fifty six thousand for pole settings. For the overhead and underground primaries, five hundred forty five thousand, six hundred twenty two. The pole damages which we getting reverse for some of those uh is uh sixty, sixty six thousand, six hundred thirty four. Uh station uh group also, we upgraded the thirty four point five K V lines. And some of the SCADA uh switching, that's sixteen thousand uh six hundred ninety two dollars for hazmat and oil uh cleanups, twenty one thousand forty six. The streetlights, uh sixty two thousand, two hundred twenty five, those are private lights, floodlights and streetlight conversions uh connections. Uh storm troubles, we spent approximately forty thousand, four hundred twenty four. Uh the underground uh subdivisions which are billable, this is another billable i- item, ten thousand, two hundred eighty eight. And the miscellaneous, uh you know, like uh uh we spent on the reclosers and some of the switches. Uh overhead switches for four hundred eighty seven thousand, two hundred sixty five. So that's what they were, the the number of two million and uh to eighty, thirty two thousand dollars coming from. So in uh C Y twenty one, uh we are asking for one million four hundred eighty eight. And the the next five years uh after that, you know, it's gonna go back down to go back, go to fifteen, one million five hundred almost every year. Uh so that's for C Y twenty one. Uh the next item is uh Yeah, that's, that's basically, that's all I had to give. So the total estimated uh the spendings for C Y twenty one, we are estimated, estimating to spend uh eight million twenty thirty eight. And the total spending for C Y twenty one, we are requesting eleven million, six hundred forty eight thousand. And uh and earlier I explained about the Wilmington substation project that we're still looking, searching for the land. And we got uh, we spent some money uh like what I explained earlier uh on uh investigating about the feasibility for the feasibility study we uh have uh spent some money there. But other than that, that uh concludes my report uh for the budget for C Y twenty one.
Thank you very much.
If there are any questions, I'll be more than happy to uh answer them.
Are there any questions for me? I might note that on October twenty second, twenty twenty, the C A B voted to recommend um this capital budget, uh three to zero with two absent. There are no questions, uh could I have a motion?
You have my cell. Mister Chairman, Mister Chair?
Yes, yes, please go.
Move that the board of commissioners approved the calendar year two thousand twenty one capital budget, the amount of eleven million, six hundred forty eight thousand and four and forty seven dollars as presented on the recommendation of the general manager.
Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Is there any discussion? If if not, could I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Vicino Y?
Mr. De C I. Talvadi.
Thank you, Bob. Okay, good, uh pass five to zero. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Uh could we move into the operating budget, please? Wendy?
Good evening.
Hello?
Well, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, you're perfect.
Okay, so tonight I'm gonna present the operating budget for C Y twenty one. I I prepared it a little different this year, so it's a visual, since we're here on Zoom. I went over this particular budget to actual discrepancy last month when I presented the August financials. Um so it's it's pretty much the same. And if you wanna look at the budget and you follow the FERC numbers right here, you can see the discrepancies. I'll briefly go over them, vacancies in multiple areas due to the talent pool, retirees resignations causing a decrease in spending in the grid asset management, station technicians, materials management, linemen, resource engineers, I T and admin staff. COVID situation causing a decrease in spending on the tree trimming program, vacation opportunities, which is uh which which is in our uh employee benefit section here, home energy audits and programs, education and training programs, legal proceedings, um that's most likely gonna level itself out this year. I'm not quite positive, but it's looking like it. And then unforeseen events causing an increase in spending, which was our uh major roof repairs and the security monitoring measures for our I T infrastructure um intrusion. So I'm just gonna, you know, give you the highlights. So when we prepare the budget, we have to strategically balance everything. And the components of that involve the impact to the rate, the rate increase to the R M L D customers. The rate of return between four to eight percent and we're trying to move closer to six percent target. Our funding below the line town of Reading obligation, the funding capital projects, balancing that out with the operating fund transfers. Maintaining the operating fund at two to three months of monthly operating expenses. Balancing the rate stabilization fund, fund fluctuation and limits. And this year we added some money to that, so we're going to use it. And of course, the impact of our power supply fluctuation um affects the overall rate increase. So I broke out um this lovely spreadsheet right here. Typically, I present it this way, fixed and semi variable. And what I did this year is I broke it into two sections. So first, we're gonna start with the fixed costs. The total fixed costs represent uh seventy nine percent of the overall operating budget, of which about approximately sixty nine percent is for power supply, which is a decrease of almost uh of approximately six and a half percent from the previous budget. And Chuck can speak to that or Greg uh after I'm complete here. The depreciation expense of uh almost five and a half percent continues to increase due to the necessary capital investments. The voluntary payments to the town of Reading of uh two and three quarter percent remains constant until twenty twenty two, when we just changed the formula to three point eight seven five mils of the three year average of kilowatt hour sales. The four towns payments, which is the two percent net plant, is approximately one point eight three percent. This continues to increase also due to the necessary capital investments. Basically, everything I'm speaking of right here is uh pretty much set in stone. It's an obligation that we've committed to, so seventy nine percent of the budget is pretty much fixed. So the rest of the budget, about twenty one percent, is where you have your semi variable. The reason we say semi variable is because we're still tied to some contracts, of course, the C B A contracts, we have three of them. So labor is nine and a quarter percent, of which one point three five percent is for capital projects. So I like to tell you the total labor and then I break out the portion of capital just for visual effects. Uh overtime is about a one and a quarter percent, of which less than a quarter percent is for capital projects. Employee benefits and pensions is almost five percent, one percent for capital projects, that's our loaded rate. Uh the other operating and maintenance expenses represent about almost two and a half percent of the of the twenty percent. Conservation expenses represent one point three five percent. Pre trimming is one percent of the budget. And about half percent of the budget goes to each of the following: contract services, legal expenses, property insurance, software, hardware, maintenance and vehicle expenses. And a quarter percent goes to our training and tuition programs, transformer maintenance and rent expense. So there, there's the big picture right here, showing you that uh you know, it's about ninety, ninety million dollars this year of the, what we're um what we're anticipating for an operating budget. And I just wanna, we committed to giving eighteen month, eighteen month uh projection of a rate increase. So that way the towns can properly prepare for their budgeted seasons. So an approximate two to two and a half percent overall rate increase for calendar year twenty twenty one will be entirely supplemented by the rate stabilization fund of uh one million, seven hundred fifty thousand to two million dollars. So the amount of money that we went over on our rate of return in um calendar year twenty nineteen, we, even though we didn't have to, we put it into the rate stabilization fund. And we are gonna use that to supplement the rate increase to our customers. Especially this particular year, it's, it's really gonna help out. Um and then an approximate three to three and a half percent overall rate increase for calendar year twenty twenty two will be partially supplemented by the rate stabilization fund of approximately one percent or eight hundred thousand dollars. So now, when the towns are preparing their budget, they have an outlook. And if uh as we've committed, if we stray from this for any particular reason, we will pick up the difference with the rate stabilization fund. And then there's the six year plan, that's the overall um look. That's the overall look. And what you can see here is is the balance I'm talking about, so you did the rate of return right here on the bottom. And we're trying to stay around six and but we're also trying to stay responsible with our rate increases to our customers. Um that concludes my section of the presentation. I think Chuck or Greg wanna add on to the, to the purchase power section before you guys make a motion or any questions on this in particular?
I, I think that taking care of our customers this way is a, is wonderful, Wendy, and uh a very appropriate use of the rate stabilization fund. To block the impact of the increases. Uh Chuck uh or anyone else care to make any additional comments on this? If not, I might uh note that the uh October twenty seventh, the C A B voted to recommend, you know, voted three to zero with a two absent um to recommend this to the uh um board of commissioners. If I could get a uh
Mister Chairman?
Motion? Oh Chuck?
Yes, I, I'm sorry, it took me a minute to get off of mute here. If you could put the six year numbers back up, I can give some very quick overview comments on those. Okay, if if you take a look uh beginning with the calendar year twenty one budget, uh you'll see the energy cost is running around uh twenty six and three quarter million. Um it goes up a little bit each year. You take a look at capacity and transmission, uh they started a combined impact of about thirty four, thirty five million. And they run up to uh thirty seven million uh five hundred. Basically, these are very minimal increases in power supply. This is a reversal from what we saw beginning in twenty eighteen, where there were significant drops in the energy price. Um capacity uh about four years ago was running uh eleven to twelve dollars a K W month. Uh in twenty twenty three, the auction came in at two dollars a K W month. But transmissions continuing to go up at eight or nine percent a year. Basically, what you are seeing though is a relatively stable fuel market and relatively stable wholesale energy cost. We are not expecting any dramatic shifts over the next five or six years. So we're, we're looking at a period of stability in what has been presented as seventy percent of our operating budget. So I just wanted to call everybody's attention to the fact that we're anticipating uh dramatic changes there. The only other uh quick comment that I wanted to make, and I don't see the uh the line item here, but uh the uh energy efficiency uh component of the budget. Two years ago, it was uh about seven hundred thousand dollars. Uh this year, uh it is about nine hundred thousand dollars and in the budget, about one point two million dollars. Um these increases are due to the expansion of our program activity. We have uh pushed out the electrification programs with the heat pump incentives, E V incentives. We've added the yard equipment for efficiency programs. Uh very aggressive in what we're doing for energy efficiency, and it is beginning to show up in the budget. Uh also being added to uh the budget will be some increases in labor as reaches its full staffing levels. But I did want to uh point to sort of the highlights of uh the financial activities occurring under uh I R D's um Aegis or umbrella, if you will.
Thank you, Chuck.
Thank you.
Uh if there's no uh, no other questions, gotta get a motion, please?
Yeah, Mister Chair?
Yes, I do have one quick question, if I may.
Go ahead, Dave.
Sorry?
Uh I've always wondered, I mean, we spend about a half a million dollars a year on legal expenses. And I know there's a lot of legal expenses, but it's always just seemed like a high number to me. And I, I, you know, just in in reviewing invoices and so on, it just, there's a lot of things that we do. And I just wonder if there's any way to get these numbers down. There, or at least there used to be a, or there is a policy of reporting to us monthly or quarterly on what we're spending so much on lawyers for. Um I just wondered if um anybody could address that? Or staff attorney handle, handle routine things. Sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I, what I'd like to do is um is maybe uh hold that to the end, if you don't mind, Dave.
Okay.
Get through the energy policy and
Oh, sorry, yeah, I thought you were voting on it.
Uh no, oh, we are gonna vote on it, we are gonna vote on it. But um and and I, I think we do probably have a detailed analysis, some of which is shareable and some of which may not be. Uh but I, or leave that up to to Colleen to delineate the two, because it's not just about. Colleen, please, go ahead.
If if I could just make a quick comment, I think at the next meeting, uh Wendy has all the details. And actually, the costs since I've come to work here have come way down, what we pay for legal. We have three union bargaining units. Uh we have uh legal for all of our power supply contracts. I mean, it's significant and we can break that down, Wendy's got it all by detail. Uh and we can show that in a spreadsheet at the next meeting, but overall, it's uh, it's down. Would you agree, Wendy?
I would, I was gonna add that we budgeted a a specific amount in nineteen and came down seventy five thousand from the budget. And the same thing in twenty, we budgeted five hundred thousand, we're at three fifty, Dave, I just want, I didn't
Okay, I was just looking at the five hundred and I had not known that it's gone down over that ten year period. What was it ten years ago then?
Well, I can get those numbers for you.
All right, okay, just
Colleen took the words out of my mouth because I was here before you, Dave.
Yes.
Navigably more, let me tell you. And part of it, the firms that we're using and how it was being spent.
Right.
The organization has become much more efficient.
Right. I can also add quickly that uh we, you know, we really, when we hired our new H R director, she's also an attorney. And the point of doing that was to even further decrease the cost. So, so that we could do more in-house, so we are making great strides on that. But we can present that
Okay, yeah, so in effect, that was adding a position to take away some legal
No, it was not adding a position, it was um, it it was the, we had Beth, Antonio and
Oh, right, okay. All right.
Thank you.
May I have a motion?
Silence of the board there, let's carry
Well, okay, Bob, yes, please.
Wouldn't there be an appetite to hire an in-house lawyer?
That's what we just did.
Yeah, but a second, then if you have one, it sounds like it specializes in H R.
Well, we, we, we can present it next, but like power supply, uh you know, legal, you have labor attorneys, you have legal attorneys for uh power supply contracts. I mean, there's, there's a whole bunch of different specialties that are out there that every utility uses them for. So like I said, we can break that out uh and and show it next month, but overall, the costs are down. And we
Well done, thank you.
Try to mitigate that, thank you.
Thank you. I have one other quick question, if I may.
Yes?
Mister Chairman, where do um, I know we, where do rec sales revenue show up in the, is that, is that a line item of what we get in every year in rec sales? Or how that's changed over time?
And it's part of the purchase power.
I mean, is there, I, I missed it, but is there a line that says
It's a separate line, I've, I've seen it in the budget, right, Wendy?
No, it's not, it's not a separate line item, but again, I can share that spreadsheet with you, that's not a problem.
Can I make a point? Uh not too many uh board meetings ago, we went over the whole rec process, how we sell them and how much money uh has come in. We, we actually dovetailed into that to all the, the spreadsheets that Chuck put together by saying, okay, as we go towards at that time, the Golden Bill, and now it's roadmap twenty fifty, how those rec sales offset uh the cost of green going forward. And we can actually probably consolidate that presentation that Chuck did and do that again. And I think that will answer And we can actually probably consolidate that presentation that Chuck did and do that again, and I think that will answer Dave's question, but that wasn't too many meetings ago.
Yeah, it's not, are we getting the information somewhere? It's just, is it in the budget? If somebody wanted to look at the budget, you know, it just might be a great line item to break out. That's all. Not a big deal.
Okay, I see.
Mr. Pacino, could I have a motion, please?
Are we ready yet? Move that the Board of Commissioners approve the calendar year 2021 operating budget with a net income of $3,548,598 as presented in the recommendation to General Manager.
Second.
Could I have any discussion? If not, could I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Pacino, aye.
Mr. Stenbeck, aye.
Stanis, aye.
Talbot, aye.
Mr. Coulter.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. I'd like to move on now to the General Managers' report, and let me just give a preview in terms of what the process is going to be here. So Colleen will give a community update, then I'll make some comments relative to the Board Policy Number 30 as dealing with the Palmer, as dealing with biomass from a historical perspective. Colleen will then talk about how the power portfolio is constructed and what she does in that regard. And then we'll move into presenting the Policy Number 30 with recommendations from anyone on the board as to what it should read, what should we take out, et cetera, just so everyone understands what the process is. Yeah. So Colleen, if you would move into the community update, please.
All right, thank you. Real quick, thanks to everybody and staff on the budget. We've made a lot of changes to get this, to get this down, and I think everyone does a great job, and I just want to say thank you. Okay, let's get into.
Excellent work, everyone. Excellent.
Yeah, I think they, everybody did a great job. And Kathleen Ryback, she's not here. She was in the cab meeting. She works really hard, too, and thanks to Kathleen. So there's a press release coming out tomorrow, and that is on the R M L D conducting its customer satisfaction survey, which is going to begin on November 30th. Now, a reminder is back in 2014, we did this big reorganizational study and gave lots of great things, and we made updates like every quarter to both the cab and the board, and we whittled it down to like just a couple of things left. Now, we didn't completely reorganize all the divisions, but we did an overall reorganization, and now we're at a granular level on that. The other aspects were to do a customer satisfaction survey. So we're just about to check off that very last box. And so Redding Light has hired Great Blue Research, which a lot of the other MLPs use to conduct a customer satisfaction survey to seek input in areas of service reliability, rates, customer service, energy efficiency programs, power supply, et cetera. So the survey will be conducted by phone and online. It should take no more than 15 minutes to complete. Great Blue will be contacting randomly selected customers of both residential and commercial. We have, it's from November 30th to December 11th with a goal of completing 400 residentials, 100 commercial surveys, and they will not be asking any personal or financial information when calling. Okay, so if you're not randomly selected, you can go online, www.rmld.com and fill it out online, and we're super excited about hearing your input. And so that's the press release for tomorrow. And then we'll do a presentation when everything comes back, and we'll do how we did, and then they'll compare it to other MLPs, and that will be, that will be good to take a look at. All right, some of the community relations updates, the voluntary fourth grade art contest that we usually do in person. We did that virtually. That's the annual electrical safety contest, contest conducted in partnership with the schools in all four towns. And we had 10 students that participated, and will all receive $10 Amazon book gift cards. So we know this year with COVID and everything, but we were glad that people did participate. So they're all going to get some, some books at Amazon. The 2021 historical calendar that everybody loves, that'll be out the week of Thanksgiving. We got a brand new one of those plastic kiosks that everybody loves to see with the little, you know, shout out to Karen, real estate pamphlets. We now have one in front of R M L D to get your calendar. It's also available at Lucci's in New England Beverage. It's also available at all area libraries and most town halls. The senior centers will hand them out during grab and go events and deliver with wheels on meal, meals on wheels, sorry. And we'll also deliver to assisted living facilities in the area. And that's all I have for customer. Why do I feel like a Saturday Night Live thing? That's all I have for customer relations.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you very much, Colleen. Any questions? If not, I'd like to move into the thing we're waiting here, which is the view of the board policy. And first, I'd just like to start with giving a little bit of background, and what I mean by background is both historical context as well as what's been happening in the last couple of weeks in terms of trying to find out, you know, what's really been going on and why did we get to kind of this position in terms of biomass? And let me just start by saying that from two, we went back in time and looked at board minutes. And from 2007 through 2014, now over a decade, right? We've, the R M L D Board has considered and recommended, recommended, the board has recommended, sometimes when I wasn't there, Phil probably won't remember, that we go after biomass projects and approve them. There was Russell and Western Mass in 2007. There was Indec Maine Energy in 2007. There was Concord, New Hampshire Steam, which stretched from 2008 to 2012, believe it or not. And very few of these biomass projects ever came to fruition because of changes in energy cost and/or capital, equipment, and financial funding issues. So there are a lot of tremendous number of biomass initiatives, which, by the way, historical boards here at the R M L D approved. Now, coming up to the time, present time being, Palmer Biomass was acceptable in February of 2020 as part of the R M L D Energy Policy 30, because it is called out in the policy. The R M L D General Manager appropriately entered into a contract along with, we didn't do this by ourselves, with Braintree, Danvers, Groveland, Merrimack, Middleton, Norwood, and Taunton Municipal Light Plants. None of these other MLPs have had objections at their board meetings. The Mass Department of Environmental Resources, D O E R, gave approval for this project after extensive engineering analysis, this is what they told us directly, of compliance for fuel and for emissions. All permits have been granted, both by the state and by local Springfield permits, which handle the obviously local area. Commissioner Woodcock from the D O E R indicated the other environmental groups, including the Sierra Club and the Appalachian Mountain Club, have offered constructive criticism. And by the way, these will be entered into the minutes, so you'll be able to see what I'm reading here in the minutes from tonight, but are working with the D O E R to try to find solutions. A subsequent Globe newspaper article, which I know everybody has seen and quoted and circulated here, but the commissioner stated was not entirely accurate. The biomass issue came to light at the R M L D Board of Commissioners meeting with the circulation of the New Yorker article that Commissioner Hennessy sent around, which is, was a great, great article. And in that, it referenced an MIT article, researcher from the Sloan School, and the R M L D said, let's investigate this further. And that's when we started developing a bias against using biomass. As an aside, the MIT researcher developed a simulation of many different inputs into a software analysis feedback loop that predicts or tries to what carbon trade-offs may be. While the analysis he has done supports what seems obvious, that is, that burning trees immediately creates a carbon debt. We kind of all agree to that, and then that debt doesn't get paid for 50 to 100 years until you regrow a forest. But if you examine what he uses for input into his simulation, there are two things that are a little, actually quite a bit different than what we were talking about with Palmer. One is that it's, it's not taking down a forest. He took down, the MIT researcher stopped at like 25, taking down 25% of a forest. We're talking about trimming trees. We're not killing the forest. We're trimming trees, which we're doing anyway. And by the way, that the chips that come off of that today, which are ground up, also degenerate into carbon over a longer period of time, granted. But what I'm trying, what I'm trying to make is, it's not just, you know, exactly the same thing that Palmer was proposing. While it's not been resolved whether chipping, you know, creates a, as big a carbon load, et cetera, I'm just trying to point out that it's a complicated issue, and we don't think we can just run the judgment on this immediately. Until the R M L D has further information on options available, the contract is in place and will be honored unless the project does not meet its financial, capital, and production requirements within the stated time constraints or other alternatives for the R M L D come to light. At the present, there's no reason to believe the D O E R was incorrect in their approvals of this project. But we're going to, the Board of Commissioners is going to monitor this feedback appropriately and try to drive to conclusion on it. That's no different than what we said in the last meeting, except we've done an awful lot of work walking through, how did we get to this situation? Hence, my comment to Grace and others who are here concerned about this is, where were you a year ago? We would have easily changed the policy, and we would have been facing this. The fact of the matter is, we have a signed contract, and we have to go through this in a very rigorous way. That said, these will be entered into the meeting minutes. Colleen, would you care to comment on your balancing of our portfolio and what the board has had agreed to, what you were trying to do, basically?
Yeah, I was just going to step through a little bit about, you know, what it used to be like and what it is now, and just try to give everybody a kind of a better idea of what we do with power supply. We have to have a balanced power supply portfolio to mitigate risk, which is significant in a utility. The portfolio would consist of a base load generation energy, which is typically high capital cost, low energy cost with high capacity. The portfolio will also have intermediate load generation energy that has a lower capital cost with potentially less firm capacity in peak load generation energy. As you go from base to peak, the cost escalates. Peak generation is typically low capital and high energy costs, and can often include ISO having their standby less efficient and less clean plants running to cover these peak loads. The R M L D invested in the Stony Brook Combined Cycle Units that hedge these peak loads against market prices. In addition to energy, the R M L D must also cover its capacity requirements for all of its loads. And in addition to that, you know, we run the peak shredding to try to prevent those less clean peakers from running with our gas generator and our battery. A well-managed portfolio balances the base, intermediate, and peak generation energy in addition to the types of generation within each of those categories. A managed portfolio within a portfolio to further mitigate risks to the R M L D customers. Purchasing energy in a competitive nature is all about timing. Now, Chuck talked earlier about not so much market shift for the next five years, but if there was market shift, that's more crystal ball stuff. So timing will be increasingly important as Massachusetts attempts to meet its statute compliance to the Global Warming Solutions Act. Small, medium, and larger renewables will attempt to get constructed as deemed in compliance with the D O E R and permitted by the D E P. Utilities interested in the construction of renewables in Massachusetts, who support decentralization, like me, will want to be part of the project in lieu of purchasing paper recs to cover the G H G requirements. The R M L D, prior to my hire and in review of past board minutes, had a powered rate committee in which the board reorganized and eliminated most subcommittees and who reviewed longer-term contracts. In 2013, when I was hired, Energy Services, now Integrated Resources, was utilizing essentially a once-per-month pricing code to cover its energy along with up to six months to go through the cab and the board and board discussions on long-term projects. Without a formal power supply risk management strategy, I worked to develop a solid and best utility practices transition facilities agreement, or called T F A, which would allow the G M to follow a formal time and price trigger strategy for most energy purchases. That's for short- and long-term commitments with longer-term renewable projects purchased under the Board Policy Number 30. Now, those are purchased in, on the T F A, they're purchased in tranches. Policy Number 30 specifically directs the G M to acquire renewable energy to meet targeted goal levels within the portfolio. Since most of the renewable purchases are intimate, they fell into categories of somewhat intermediate and somewhat peak, which high-capacity renewables are very difficult to come by. Creative solutions such as solar duct curve projects combined with nuclear fill-in was a method that the R M L D could achieve portfolio requirements, and I give kudos to everybody in our staff that come up with these ideas. Remember, it's both energy and capacity that are required. Capacity is essentially an investment in a generator, whether a project participant or a straight capacity purchase on the market. Included in all of this now is the requirement for recs, which adds another complicated layer to power supply. The R M L D works hard to find these renewable projects whose energy prices combined with rec values mitigate the cost impacts to the R M L D customers. The R M L D currently utilizes to meet its power supply requirements presented to the cab and voted approval by the Board Policy Number 30 and similarly, a T F A power supply strategic purchasing procedure that was also approved by both the cab and the board. Unless Board Policy Number 30 changes, or unless the T F A power supply strategic procedure changes, the cab would not need to provide another recommendation. However, every purchase has followed either Policy 30 or the T F A, or in some instances, both, when renewable pricing falls within the T F A pricing and has been shown on the ongoing power supply portfolio graph, which is presented monthly by Chuck and his group. Okay, and this, these graphs depict R M L D's current and future energy commitments as well as open market positions and risk. And as always, I am at the pleasure of whatever the board votes, and if you change the policy, I will make it happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Colleen. Okay, let's change the policy.
Okay.
Put up the policy. Actually, Dave, you had said in something, haven't you, Mr.?
I have. Mr. Chairman, can I, can I address some of the points that have just been described? Because there is a lot more to say than what's been said.
You have two minutes.
Yeah, okay. So you asked, let me just try to respond, and I would be grateful if you don't try to cut me off after two minutes. To answer your question first, John, of where were people a year ago? You know, a year ago, this Palmer plant, which is proposed and has not been built. By the way, you know, yes, the D O E R gave it a permit 10 years ago, so why didn't it get built? The community strongly opposes it in Springfield and has filed a bunch of legal challenges to it. The 12 out of 13 city council members are trying to revoke its permit, its local permit. The plant does not qualify for the R P S, and so it can't sell its credits.
Dave, excuse me for one second. Let me just interject there, and that is, if it does get rejected, then there's no issue. If it gets rejected, then then.
I didn't interrupt you, John, with all due respect. Okay, with all due respect. Last year, there was an effort, the only way this plant could get built is if it had contracts for its electricity. And its advocates went before the Middleborough Gas and Electric Department. They voted no. The board discussed it and voted no, and the Datelight Department publicly opposes it. Belmont Light voted no. So, John, you made it sound like all these light plants approved it.
Six of them did. Actually, seven, including us.
There's 41 municipal light plants in the state. Concord Municipal Light Plant, John Zhang-Moranges, at the end, he presented to their board, and the board said, we don't want this, and the Concord Plant said, no, they don't want it. Holden, which is Jane Parento, who used to work for us, is now the G M there, said, no, she doesn't want it for Holden. Wellesley Municipal Light Plant took it off the agenda after public input, and they don't want this.
Excuse me, Dave. I'm, I'm going to belabor this.
No, I'm not.
I, I.
John, I didn't, okay.
Tracy, would you please turn off Mr. Talbot's microphone, please?
All right, John. Have it your way. No, this is not acceptable.
The chairman, Dave.
Not acceptable. I have more to say.
You have to defer to the chairman. Thank you very much.
Oh, okay, John. Have it your way.
Make point, counterpoint about these different issues, which we're in a contract right now, and that's where we are. So let's deal with it moving forward, not looking backwards, shall we? Okay, can we put up the Energy Policy Number 30? Oh, Mr. Colter, please.
Yeah, I know, John. I think one of the other points, as Colleen was stating, she's making these decisions to go into these contracts, and I think that might be another point we could discuss. I understand your definition and your reasoning, Colleen. It was very, very clear. But purchasing these types of large energy commitments should be discussed in the Policy 30. Thank you. energy commitments should be discussed in the policy thirty, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Bob, appreciate it.
I'm, I'm confused about Bob's, Bob, are you saying that we should be discussing at the board? These policies, is that what you're saying?
I, that, that's what I'm saying, and I'm, I'm saying a large energy purchase of that size should become, or should be discussed under board review. I understand Col- Colleen's reasoning why it was moved away in order to speed up the purchases in, in, in time, and of course, everything's time sensitive, but I think it should be a point which can discuss.
And Bobby, I believe we all signed as commissioners, the T F A, if I'm not incorrect, is that correct, Colleen?
When, but, uh, uh, maybe it was at one point, um, so.
Yeah, so, uh.
Mister, Mister Chair, John, I, just, I'm curious why, um, what's the reason that you don't want Dave to share his counterpoints to some of the things that were already said, what's your concern, what is your concern?
The only reason, I want Dave to share what his changes are with the policy, because I, I think it's absolutely correct. But he's trying to make a point that many other facilities did not agree to this moving forward, we don't know the reasons why. And he's making, trying to, through, again, through innuendo, suggest that we made a mistake in terms of signing this when six other and major MLPs did sign it. So that's the only reason, and so I, I'm trying to get this done in a reasonable period of time without animosity, and Dave just, just wants to keep talking about this and I don't understand why, so would you please unmute Mr. Talbot, please? Okay, Dave, may we move forward?
Our board policy number nineteen says we have authority to oversee power supply contracts and Colleen brought the Entergy Contract before us and others, and not this one. I think the concern is that the board knew nothing about this. It was you, I was answering your question, John, which was where were we a year ago? Well, why, why don't we know about this when all these other boards are, are thinking about it and making a decision? And we didn't know anything about it, and uh, we now are quarter owners of this plant or quarter owners of its power. We voted four oh at the last meeting to review how this contract came to be and what our options were. That was done in public session and we, and we expected an update and an item on the agenda.
And we are, we did do that.
Not really, so.
We are, we are there. Okay, the emotion that we had in the last meeting was to was to do exactly that and then start by working through the board to retain inde- uh, outside counsel previously, not previously engaged on this. So half of this is doing some fact finding and finding out where we are and who said what to whom from the state level down, by the way, the state blessed this project. And it just wasn't, it wasn't Colleen, and by the way, these other boards uh, don't, uh, the other boards don't influence their general manager in terms of their power supply contracts in many cases. I don't know if you know that, but that's, that's what.
Read policy number nineteen, which is says.
I did, I have it right here.
Okay, we approve, the board, our board, and this is to Bob Coulter's point. You know, this is a multi-year, uh, twenty-year multimillion dollar contract and our policy nineteen says our Board of Commissioners approves after allowing a thirty-day period for input from the cab as provided in the twenty-year agreement, the following topics, point three is power contracts and agreements. That's what this is, and it's a massive one, it's not a little spot market one, it's giant.
Well, in the first one, it was.
A hugely controversial plan.
It was superseded by the T F A, our general manager, we gave our general manager the right to make these do, uh, in moments, make these contracts in light of what the time was that needed to be handled. And that, that's, that's, we, we gave that up.
Okay, it's fine, I'm, I'm, I'm all set, you, you had a very long statement which you take to be the final word, but you're just one of five commissioners, I have an equal right to speak as well. Colleen made a, a long statement and I had what was probably half of one of your statements and you put me on mute, it's offensive, but I'm all set.
I'm sorry that you feel that way, but you were, no, you were going beyond, beyond what we needed to hear, Dave, that's all.
According to you, okay, why don't you move on to your policy number thirty and we can discuss that?
Okay, let's move on, uh, can we put that up, Tracy, please?
Mr. Chair, as you know, and as you instructed me, I sent some proposed edits in which you instructed me to send to Tracy, which I've done, so I have a few line edits that I would propose for your consideration, for the board's consideration.
Thank you very much, Dave. Could you expand that, please, Tracy, so that people can see it easier? Uh, great, thank you very much. And uh, Colleen, at the same time, I think you had an editor too, is that incorporated in here as well?
I think what you're looking at is my stuff, but the edits have been accepted. So to show, if you want to, you should show the original, then show red lines so people can look at what I'm suggesting. This is my version, but with the edits accepted, and that's not what you should show, show it with the edits visible.
I didn't accept anything, this is exactly what you sent me.
Okay, well, let, let's just go through line item by line item, I think that'd be fine.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
It's supposed to be a word thing, then, a word, uh.
Yeah, it's not, yeah, I definitely didn't.
Well, make it, make it into a PDF, or I'll make it into a PDF and resend you, if you wanted to, why don't you guys describe, describe the original? Um, and then I, give me a minute here to resend it to you. Cause you have some things from Colleen as well, I believe.
Uh, Colleen, did you have any changes to make as well to this?
I, I, when she puts it up, there was one section where it said clean energy and I sent everyone the link where the D O E R specified it as net zero. Um.
And where would that be, would that be under one A?
Um, I'm sorry.
In terms of the purpose?
Yep, one, one second. I'm sorry, I thought we were gonna show something that had like different comments from the different people on it, so.
I think Dave's was the, uh, was the one that I had heard back from. I hadn't heard from the other commissioners. The, the other commissioners, do you have any additional inputs to the, uh, what's being shown? Or what I'd like to do is walk through it sort of line item by line item, so you can do this real time if you'd like. So if you could put that back up, Tracy, until Dave sends his line?
I'm sending it right now.
Okay.
Also, there's, you might want to adjust in the meantime, you have a section in brackets that says to be added, whatever the biomass policy that's being put forward for us to vote on, and there's actually not one in the draft, it's.
Okay, may I say something, John?
Go ahead, please.
Okay, so the reason why I had the brackets is I wasn't clear at the beginning whether or not you wanted to eliminate all biomass as it was originally written and as it's included in the D O E's, ours, global warming, high capacity, high efficiency or no efficiency. You know what I mean, so there's a difference, there's a big difference in different types of biomass plant, so I, I didn't know at the beginning. Do you just want no biomass? Or do you only want certain high efficiency ones? So that's, that's why I had put that bracket in there. And just one little small clarification on the, the board and the cab policy. When I presented the Power Supply Strategic Plan in the T F A, we had talked about competitive pricing and renewable plants that would be built and how will we be able to get in on those in order to meet what you wanted me to do, because I could go out and buy the rec paper and cover it. When you say that the cab has to have so many days, if you make a policy and the cab approves the policy and you approve the policy, you don't have to go back through the cab and the board every single time you want to do that. That was the whole point of the T F A and the policy that was presented and approved by the board. So the language that's getting put back in there will go back the other way and read it literally the other way to say, go to the cab and then go to the board. And, and you can put that in there, but we will go back to what it was before and we may not get in on these projects. Because that will be, as I said in what I said earlier, six months it could take to do that whole process. So, and it also says that I'm supposed to bring up, update you quarterly. Every month, we put, Chuck talked about what got put into that slide and what we were adding every month and how we were trying to meet the goals with or without the recs every month. So the only change that I had in there was to change it to the D O E R had indicated in their language, and I sent you the link, net zero. Um.
So that, let's go, it's out in the purpose then, to develop a practical approach to addressing the need for clean net zero or non-carbon? Colleen?
Yes, um, can you, can you scroll down a little bit, Tracy? Okay, um, yep, keep going. Okay, stop. All right, I'm. Okay, why, why don't you guys keep talking, I, I'll find it on mine, because this has been changed.
Well, I, I'd like to hear from the other commissioners, I have no issue with taking out all biomass. I don't personally believe that all biomass is bad, but uh, you know, in the, in terms of moving forward with other alternatives, I have no issue with taking out biomass.
I agree, John.
John, um, this is Bob, um, if the state agrees that biomass is clean, I'm, I'm gonna, and if it's legislated as a clean energy, there's a lot of opinions on it on one side or the other. But if it's, if the state says it's clean, what, why, why wouldn't we, why would we make a, make an exception to that? And there, and there is no definition of what the state has said yet. So we're making a judgment call and it might be deemed clean or some other researcher, some other researcher might say it is clean. Um, it is burning an available resource. That, that's out there, you know, I, you, we have a million dollars in tree trimming, we're one municipality. Multiply that times three hundred and fifty communities and you can imagine the amount of ships that get generated just, just from tree trimming from a municipal perspective, never mind anything else. So there's a large amount of fuel out there, um, so.
I mean, to Bob's point, I mean, the way you could handle it is to say that only biomass facility is certified by the mass uh, as, as eligible for class one Massachusetts R P S would be eligible, that, that's, I think that's a way to do what Bob is saying. I, I think at this time, like Palmer wouldn't get that, but others might, you know, so you know, we, we might need to wordsmith this a little bit, but there's something to what, you know, what Bob is saying. Um, the only tweak I would say is that the wood chip thing is a bit of a misleading thing, the amount of wood chips generated are trivial relative to what some, this thing would take thousands of tons a day. So, but we don't need to get into the weeds, but this idea that this is just tree trimmings is, is misleading, because it's not, it, it would not.
Okay, so, uh, we're putting something in that says that the if the biomass technology was significantly better than some other clean, whether it's hydro or solar or whatever in terms of carbon production.
I, I think the bar would be class one of the Massachusetts R P S, if it's qualified for that, then I think, you know, what Bob's saying is, if I get him right, is that that, and, and I, you know, it's hard to disagree with that. Um, I don't, you know, and, and again, there's, there's nuance here and the, the thing we were arguing about before, uh, I, I don't believe would qualify, so there are, there's different levels, um, of what it could be a tough bar, if it did cross, then, then yeah, I suppose that there could be a type of this somewhere that could qualify. You know, maybe we're not, maybe we need to go through some of these things tonight and uh, you know, come back and actually vote it in after you've had a chance for it to bake in a little bit in, in December, because there'd be a few other things to go in and figure out what answers what Bob's saying and um, you know, that, that threads the needle correctly, because we don't have anything in there right now.
Dave, it'd be very helpful to understand what the, and from, you know, you have access to this more than some of the rest of the commissioners sort of what the class one characterization is, it'd be very helpful to.
I, I believe it would say, uh, that only biomass facilities that are certified uh, state as low emission eligible for class one of the Massachusetts R P S renewable portfolio standard would be eligible under this policy. And that would, that would set the bar at a level that would put it where you, you know, maybe it would, maybe that's, maybe that's okay, and I, and if I'm not mistaken, you know, the Palmer wouldn't qualify for that, but others in the future might. But who knows, I mean, the leg- the legislature or the, the, the agencies could create loopholes, um, so we don't know, but anyway, but I, I'm not really sure, I mean, I'm, thank you for what you just said, but I'm not, I'm not really an expert in this, that's just, I think there's something like that that we could put in.
Yeah, and then, that's, this is where we were two years ago. There's these nuances, right? These nuances about, well, something could come out that's a better technology, so you don't want to preclude it and, and all this other type of thing, so.
I mean, we could vote it, and then, right now, let's keep in mind, there's nothing in there now. It's a, it's a, it's a bracket saying to be added, so we don't have a, a policy thirty in front of us that's, that's being proposed, that's ready to vote on, because this is still sitting there, not, 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 you know, edited in, right? So to do this on the fly in the meeting seems like we should, we should go, go back and figure out what that sentence needs to say.
I, I, I'm not against that, I just, you know, I, I just felt this need that people wanted to do it, one, in open session. Sure, be prepped for it and get it, get it done, so we don't have issues as such as we're facing with the whole Palmer issue. That's the only reason I'm trying to.
No, that makes sense, that makes sense, well, do you want to go through the other things, I had a few that.
Yes, why, why don't we go through the changes that you suggested?
All right. How about now, Tracy?
Mr. Chairman, can I speak now?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, Phil, go ahead.
Kind of hard here, I, I don't, I don't really like going through Zoom, I'd rather be in the room, but that's a whole nother issue.
We all would, Phil, yeah.
Um, you know, I, I'm a little bit lost here, because I was not at the last meeting doing my surgery. Um, you know, and the, the other, the other surgery just took place last Friday, so um, I, I'm kind of lost, I think there was a lot of discussion at the last meeting that I was not part of and not privy to. Um, so I'm very uncomfortable with voting anything tonight on this, because I, I just, I don't feel I have all the information that I need to, to, to vote on this.
That's, that's fair, okay.
Yeah.
Um, well, perhaps we could, uh, not vote on it tonight, but let's go through what Dave has proposed here.
I think that's what we need to do, I mean, I think I need an educational session more than anything else here tonight.
Okay.
Um, you know, and Dave seems to, you know, have more information that whatever that, he cited some state regulation that maybe we need to get a copy of, so I can actually read it, read a copy of that or something on that. Um, so that, you know, I can understand what, what, what actually we've been talking about here.
So, yeah, and so I, I agree with Phil, it's a lot, so I think, but, and this is, I think, the first substantive discussion we've had on policy thirty, it's been, you know, kind of around for a year or so, and now we can kind of look at it. If you want to go from the top, there's just a few things, they're not that complicated that I'm, that I'm proposing.
Okay, let's go from the top, yep.
So, and, and since we're just discussing it, we don't need to worry about like making a final decision, but um, we can discuss, are you, are you able to scroll up, Tracy? Cause you're, you're in the middle here in my screen.
Let me reshare. That should be it.
Um, all right, so the first one is just, you know, it's more of a copy edit, but since there's nothing to comply, it's not there yet, so just saying to prepare for this requirement, so that's no big deal. Um, the second one, and we were just kind of going back and forth on that, maybe this shouldn't be in here, but I did add that you know, giving a board responsibility that we would approve per the twenty-year agreement and the policy nineteen, I realized there's different understanding of what we should be doing. The spirit of that was if we have big giant power contracts, maybe the board should hear about what they are and have a chance to think about them. Um, the little ones, no, but the big multi-year ones, you know, maybe yes, but that's just the spirit of that one.
So my question on that one, Dave, is, is this, and it's something that goes back a while. Some of these contracts are only open for a very short period of time, the decisions have to be made pretty quickly. Um, you know, I'd like maybe Colleen to address, you know, if we, if she's got to come back to the board, what, what kind of. if we if she's got to come back to the board, what what kind of, you know, we're going to lose out and the the customer is going to be, we're going to be suffered.
Well, yeah, let me just say one quick thing and then I would do, I also want to hear from Colleen, which is, you know, the the thing we're discussing earlier is a plant that has not been built yet. So there was no time pressure to to sign anything. So, yes, I agree with you and I know that's come up and it's a legitimate point. A spot market type of thing.
Colleen there?
Yeah, I'm here. There may not have been a time pressure due to it not being built yet, but what happens is is everyone has a power supply portfolio and everyone is trying to add and and cover their risks. So people are making decisions to create the contracts. You know what I mean? So there is a timing element to that. It's different from it being built and we can go over that. I guess some other time the TFA does speak to to long and short term contracts. And the board policy speaks more to renewable. If you want to do something like we bring in the concept, I mean, I would rather you tell me don't buy this, this and this. It's like you buy renewable and then no one likes that type of renewable. So I agree with what Dave Talbert is saying. If you want to say, okay, it's renewable. We can get class one Rex on this from Connecticut, but not Massachusetts RPS. So if you put that in there, I can present it to the board like we have been doing, hey, we're going to do this. But I'm not trying to get permission from the cab in the board. So I can do it either way that you want. But most of the other MLPs do not have policies. They don't have TFAs. They don't have any of that. They they have so much less guardrails that I've put up to try to make sure we're doing a great job with renewables. And because I don't want to buy Rex, I want it in us to invest in these projects. So I I don't want to miss out on them. Uh, at the end, I can just cover us with with paper. So that was kind of the point of it. So I I would ask that Chuck speak to this real quick because he can give you an idea of what the timing is to answer. Phil's question, can you can you do that? Is it okay, John, if if Chuck speaks briefly?
Yes.
With respect to the timing issue, um, there is a bit of a nuance there. Uh, we have bought into contracts through Patriot Renewables where we have executed uh, the contract before they have broken ground. The reason for that has been that they can't get the financial wherewithal to pursue the project without knowing that there is a market for their output product. So in the case of the wind turbines that Patriot has put up in Maine, we have signed the contract to take that output. Uh, once that's done, they've finalized their financing and they have gone out to um, to then build the project. So there there is some nuance in the timing issue. If the commission wants uh, to review our projects uh, and the the contracts that we're looking at uh, and they want to put some division in there, we need that clearly defined. So we know when we have to bring it to the commission's attention for approval. If we want to get a general policy, which is what we have now that says do it within these guidelines, we'll do that. If you want to review every project over a certain percentage impact in the portfolio, a certain KW size, a certain time horizon, spell that out, we'll bring them to you for review. That will affect some of the projects that we can look at. When E and E brings them to us, we do have um, thirty to sixty days uh, to consider those and get them executed. So we'll need to make sure that those become a priority item for fast track review through the C A B and through the commission on all of that. I don't know if that helps in terms of clarifying.
Well, I think that gives us a number of options uh, to, you know, to to think about Chuck. Thank you. And I I think what's going to happen is it's going to be, you know, a few of this and a few of that determine with certain cutoffs. They're involved there and Dave Talbot had made that point to me earlier in the week that, you know, many of these contracts require us to sign a contract actually to be able to get the funding to go ahead. Pipeline contracts are like that. They won't put even think of putting in a a pipeline for gas unless you get a thirty year contract with them signed right up front. So it's pretty standard in the industry to do it.
So and and those kinds of things, there is adequate time to have some board review. I do agree the cab doesn't necessarily need to be adding that level of bureaucracy. Sorry, no disrespect to the cab, but uh, given the time constraints that perhaps this we would just be to abort like cut out the just leave it R M L D policy nineteen and then put some kind of limiter in there, but that can be wordsmith between now and the next meeting if we're not, you know, since we're not voting tonight. But I I agree with the Phil and and the Chuck, what you guys are saying makes a lot of sense.
Okay, could we go through the rest of your?
Yeah. Yeah, the next one is just a suggestion to make quarterly, you know, I think we already have something like there's a quarterly report on progress anyway. So this just kind of another thing. So this just fits in with that. The trim I'm proposing is of waste to energy, which I think are a notch below even like the not good biomass plants in terms of their environmental profile that perhaps we don't want to be encouraging purchasing electricity from what are basically municipal waste garbage incinerators that were built twenty thirty years ago.
Right. So.
Yeah, you know, that's that I would just propose and we think about whether that's really something we want to have is we're calling that clean energy. I would disagree that it's clean energy. So then continuing on down that there's brackets that we're going to fill in with something. Okay, and then it be what I'm proposing here. So we have this goal of fifty percent by twenty thirty, but it never says what we're supposed to do between that's nine years till then. So I think we're already close to twenty now, twenty percent. Maybe we're already at twenty five percent. Whatever it is, say like, okay, let's just set the incremental goals of twenty five percent next year, thirty and two years later, thirty five, two years after that, so on. Not, you know, kind of laddering us up to the to the fifty percent in twenty thirty. Yeah, that is. Unless there's some reason uh, not to, then there's just a couple of copy edits. The trim is not to, under that is not to diss the roadmap twenty fifty, but just to say, you know, this is our policy and yeah, of course, we're going to follow whatever the state law is and and there's a whole section later talking about roadmap twenty fifty. So you you know, you can put it back in, but these are our policies. These are our goals. But whatever that was, whatever you whatever you all think. But the main thing in there and B was to put in the incremental. Um, if that's.
I I I Jonathan, I I sometimes I don't, I I don't think incrementals, you know, always because you're looking at a linear graph there and it doesn't always work that way. It it it. So if you just set an endpoint, you could, you could reach it by some good deal, right? And if things and and you could get there quicker, it just it's almost impossible to be linear.
Exactly. I mean, you know, right. And and there are goals. They're not, they're not the law. They're not, nobody's getting, you know, hung out the drive. If it's thirty two or thirty three, it's just like the goal, their goals, right? So it just like why we have no goals for the next nine years was kind of what I was thinking.
Can I make a comment?
Please go ahead. Yes.
Uh, it's not that we don't have goals for nine years. The the purpose of uh, you know, and Chuck can put up the chart when we're done talking, so everyone can see the visual. What happens is that we just start retiring the Rex. We have already been actively purchasing renewables and selling the Rex. So we've already done a lot more than others. We just would need to start addressing the Rex and and Chuck can show that. Um, and I did find the language. So everywhere where you say clean energy, and I had actually made a suggestion that we change it to a net zero policy.
Yeah, okay, sure.
The twenty fifty emissions letter, letter of determination on mass.gov that was released under the roadmap twenty fifty says a level of statewide greenhouse gas emissions that is equal in quantity to the amount of carbon dioxide or its equivalent that is removed from the atmosphere and stored annually by or attributable to the Commonwealth provided, however, in no event shall the level of emissions be greater than a level that is eighty five percent below the nineteen ninety level. So again, I Chuck and I, we wrote this revised this policy to match roadmap twenty fifty, which is pretty aggressive for us. And I just wanted to make sure that we stay consistent with the language that's out there uh, so that we're not unless you guys want to vote for something more stringent, that's fine too. But I I felt like I had to make that change because that's what it was supposed to reflect.
Yeah, and I I just copied the clean energy terminology that was here in in when I edited this in. Thinking about that whole edit. Yeah, so that's a whole other thing that we need to implement and think about. And I I don't, I'm not familiar with all that, what what you just described. And so that's a whole other thing that we need to do to this too.
Okay, I I did send you the link, not for deliberation, but I sent you the mass.gov link.
You did, and I just didn't have a chance.
Okay.
Have a chance to see it, uh, look into it.
Okay, that's good.
So then the only other real substantive change was just, and I think I believe that this is already kind of baked into our thinking is that just to be explicit that, okay, we have a policy of selling Rex. We often sell them, but that when it comes to this policy that we're not counting any power supply as being part of our clean energy or whatever the term is. If we've sold the Rex, then then we can't count it as part of our clean energy numbers. Basically, I believe that's already all of our understanding. Uh, if it's not, or if we disagree about this, then which maybe we do, then I think we maybe need to ask a neutral third party like, you know, the A G or the or the F T C about how how we're supposed to be talking about this topic what relative to having sold Rex. How do you then talk about the power that you that it that it used to be?
Colleen?
If if we are meeting the roadmap twenty fifty, you have to retire the Rex.
Okay.
If you're following that, you don't have a choice. Now, if if we buy extra renewable and we're meeting our goals, we can sell the extra ones. We have to follow specifically the guidelines.
Okay.
If that, if that's what you vote in the policy.
So then I what, as I understand it, the edit that I'm making would be irrelevant, would not be necessary because it's already part and parcel of the roadmap twenty fifty. Is that?
That's correct. That's correct.
Okay, so the only tweak on that would be that roadmap fit twenty fifty is not yet law, right?
So, but right now roadmap twenty fifty is has substance to it. It is what it is. So we say, okay, right now we're going to follow that.
Okay.
So you know what I mean? And and if it changes, we have another vote.
Okay. I I get I get what you're saying. So I mean, I guess the only thing I'd worry is if if it if roadmap twenty fifty doesn't get passed, then we don't have a policy because there's no roadmap twenty fifty, what are we left with? Are we saying we have no policy anymore or?
I'll I'll remind you and we'll we'll take a vote.
Yeah.
And we'll we'll call it something different. We'll call it something different, but we'll keep it at the same levels.
I think there's plenty of people here that will remind everybody.
What can I, John, would it be okay to ask Chuck to put up that one slide to show everybody where we are?
Absolutely, please do.
Thank you.
He's got it available.
Less less than a year ago, National Grid was shooting for eighty percent by twenty fifty. I did just FYI, that was the corporate, that was the corporate policy. It was eighty, it was, it was eighty, eighty fifty. So I it things changed. So that's just what what goes on.
Would you like me to walk through this slide very quickly?
Yes, very quickly.
Okay, um, the original R P S cleaner standard and Golden Bill were annual incremental adjustments. You had a target that was provided every year. So if you had to meet eighteen percent one year, you had to meet nineteen the next, twenty the following, maybe twenty two, twenty four, twenty six, whatever it was, it spelled out an incremental target every year. The roadmap twenty fifty does not do that. It went to a twenty thirty target, a twenty forty target and a twenty fifty target without specificity for the intervening periods. Now, we can do whatever the commission would like. But here is where our portfolio sits. We have an aggregation of resources under contract that we can use to comply with whatever structure comes out of roadmap twenty fifty in terms of can we use all effects? Do we need to use class one Rex from Massachusetts? We have the capability in our portfolio right now to be able to do that. We have enough capability to be able to do that for ten years through the year twenty thirty. That's what we've been building into our portfolio is flexibility so that we can manage against uh, the risk that this will come out in ways that we did not anticipate. So this is what's in our portfolio. It is a blend of uh, solar, wind and hydro. Uh, we have the Cabot Turner Hydro shown as a separate resource. We have non-carbon resources. Those are our nuclear entitlements and the NIPA power that we get out of New York, which does not produce Rex, but it's hydro power. So we put this all together, we've laid it out and we have choice options that we can make. I would suggest that this be uh, a foundation upon which the policy considerations uh, are evaluated and that is what uh, direction gets applied uh, for us to work with.
Seems like a very reasonable request to me, Chuck, but let's uh, discuss it amongst the commissioners and and see, I like the graphic. I mean, it really does help to to see it as opposed to just looking at numbers. How do the other commissioners feel?
About what?
About using this as sort of a baseline graphic and then making, you know, whatever modifications we'd like to it to uh, make whatever changes or recommendations to the general manager.
I've always been afraid to admit that I don't fully understand this graph. I now did. Now admitted it.
Ask me questions about it. What what?
I don't know. Um, well, first of all, the Golden Bill anymore, that's one, that's that's half of a a bill that's in conference committee now. And there's a Senate bill that disagrees with the Golden Bill's definitions, right? So that's one thing.
The division line doesn't exist anymore. And one of the reasons for that is that the standard has been jumped to fifty percent by twenty thirty, seventy by twenty forty and one hundred percent by twenty fifty.
Okay.
So the garden is a holdover, but it is what we recommended. So we've left it in the truck. The other two lines are still statute, but they only pertain to the investor round utilities.
The the other tweak, not to bring up a sore subject, is that a big chunk of it is is green, which is Palmer, which there's a lot of dispute over whether this is really has the environmental attributes that we would like it to have. So, you know, but I I would just say, so yes, I don't know what to say about it. Um, but going back to the language, I I think keeping the language about we don't count as clean energy if we sold the Rex is worth keeping in just because even if it's duplicated in a roadmap twenty fifty, we're just on record like we can sell them all we want, but let's just we we can't claim our, I think it's it's not bad to have that in there.
Okay.
It's, yeah.
Okay, can we go back to the the document, please?
I don't think I have anything else on it. Um, so.
Okay, what I'd like to recommend then, if if everyone agrees is to take what Dave has written and let's put it on the agenda for the next meeting and try to get closure on it at the next meeting. I think he's done an excellent job uh, pulling this together and uh, it's a good guideline for us to use.
We have Tracy send out that what Dave's Doc Dave's document to us so we can I deal with paper very well, better than I do electronic.
And you might want to add before you do that, you might want to go through, send it, but also send the the tweaks per the discussion. Like I think my thing about the twenty year agreement in the cab, that needs to be tweaked before. I mean, it's you're right, it shouldn't say what it said. So I think staff should have a cut at it. This is my suggestion.
Uh, yes, Colleen.
Yeah, I just, I just want to make sure that you know, if we're going to follow roadmap twenty fifty and we need to go back over that with the board about what it looks like, what we have to commit to, how much it's going to cost us, that whole presentation that that Chuck did. If that's what we're going to follow, then I I don't want to break it out into these incremental incremental things. We let's either call it roadmap twenty fifty or let's attach a chart to the policy that says this is what you're going to meet. Do you know what I mean? Or that that's that's how we're going to be able to meet it because it's it is difficult to just say, well, I don't think we're doing enough in the next nine years. I don't know what that means. We're we're going to be retiring REX for renewables we've already purchased in anticipation of this happening. So I I just think we should either have a chart or or follow twenty fifty, and if that doesn't pass, we can come up with the same thing, or we'll follow whatever comes up. They're they're going to make it a law. We're going to have to follow it. We either follow that or something more stringent. But I think it's going to be difficult for IRD to, you know, every day we're looking for contracts and, you know, Vivek talked about it at the last meeting. You know, what more hydros can you get? What can you get? You know, we're always looking. We we need to know what we're supposed to do in order to stay on top of this.
Okay. Um, perhaps, uh, how do people feel about having just a separate meeting with this one topic to pound through it? Second motion?
Yeah.
I hate you, Phil. Sorry. I hate to take your time up to do it again, but this is what's happened, right? I mean, this is why I've been struggling with this for years now. Um, so if if everyone's up for it, then Tracy, perhaps we can find a another time that's convenient for everybody to spend, let's say, an hour uh using as a template Dave's uh Dave's changes and with the input that Colleen has given as well, to try and just get the final document put together. Is that reasonable, everyone?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. It's an excellent discussion. Rocky, I know, but hopefully we'll get there. Um, can we move on? I believe we're at the uh at the end of the meeting. We'd like to talk about the next uh RMLD board meeting, which is now scheduled for or potentially scheduled for December seventeenth. Is that reasonable for everyone's schedule?
Mr. Chair, is there a chance we could move that to the sixteenth, the day before, just because I have a conflict that evening?
The sixteenth, okay, if any.
If it works for everybody.
That'd be Wednesday, the sixteenth, then? Any issues with anyone? If you can see your calendars.
Fine, fine with that, Mr. Chair.
No, no issue. Okay, good. Let's note that and move forward. Oh, Colleen, please, yes.
Uh, in the cab meeting, we talked about possibly having the EV workshop in January, and they agreed to January fourteenth. I just want to throw it out there. If that if we were going to do a back to back, we would look at doing it similar to the solar and starting the cab at five thirty and then starting the solar workshop at six thirty that could go just before eight, and then we'll start the regular board and we'll try to keep the agenda.
Really tight, yeah.
Like, if if that's acceptable, I just wanted to throw it out there.
I'm okay with that. How do the other commissioners feel?
Yeah, it's fine.
Okay, great. Uh, the next cab meeting then would be on December, recommended to be December sixteenth before the board meeting then, will you? Is that something that?
I'll talk to Kathleen about it.
What what do you think about that?
I guess the sixteenth also worked for the members that were present tonight.
Excellent, okay. Okay, great. Thank you. Um, let's see, I guess there were no accounts payable payroll questions, so I'd like to have a motion to move into executive session.
Mr. Chair, I have one information request. Um, we had a heated discussion about the Palmer biomass earlier.
Yes.
As I signed contract, if we get out of that contract, I imagine there are penalties. Can somebody actually put the information together if there are penalties under that contract?
We're in the process of uh trying to determine that.
Yes, I think that'd be very helpful to know what what it is.
Correct.
Ask you ask, maybe, you know, because if there are penalties, we're going to be asking the rate payers to pay that. People should be aware of that.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Which is why we could not be saying that we're getting out of the contract.
We're not saying that, or do we wanted to just look at it. But with that, it would be great to know what would what would the penalties be to the other party if they broke the contract? Like, if the if the plant never got built or was late, what penalties would they have to pay us?
That's a really interesting question as to whether there's reciprocity, Dave. I'm not sure there is.
So we're we're the only ones on the hook. Doesn't sound.
Anybody who signed on to it, right? So do you know whether there's reciprocity or not in this? I think the word broke is broke. So reciprocity, you know. You got all the money you want from somebody who doesn't have any money. Go ahead.
You're you're absolutely right. Yeah, I think it's a one way street. Yeah.
I think those are discussions we might want to uh have in executive session.
Correct. I agree. Could I have a motion, please, to move into executive session?
That the board go into executive session to consider purchase of real estate and to discuss confidential, competitively sensitive and proprietary information in relation to making, selling, or distributing electric power and energy and return to regular session for the sole purpose of adjournment.
Could I have a second, please?
Second.
Uh, roll call vote. Mr. Step Back Eye?
Stand and say aye.
Thank you very much. We're now adjourned. It's for executive session.
Mr. Talbot, aye, just for the record. Not sure if I was not sure if I was muted there.
He's now dead. Ow. Okay, here we go. See you in a minute.